Time is 6:04. I'd like to call the February Board Education Regular Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me for my prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for all who've came out to recognize our students and our district and their accolades. We thank you for those in the community who've taken the time to be participants in this process. We thank you to all our dedicated staff, teachers, and thank you to all our students. We ask that you would keep them all safe and guide them in the direction you would see fit. Lord, we ask that you give this board guidance and wisdom and that we would carry out your will. All these things here that we ask in your humble name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. At this time, we have some special students in the audience we're going to recognize. I believe first up, we have the Allstate Band Recognitions. Mr. Oo, the high school band director, would you care to take care of that?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. Every year, the Pickens High School Band has many students audition for the district honor band and for a chance at Allstate Band. The state is divided into districts, and our district includes Forsyth, Cherokee, Pickens, Gilmer, Fannin, Dawson, Lumpkin, Towns, Union, and White Counties. We had eighteen students audition at the first round auditions, which we actually hosted, and three of them advanced to the final round of Allstate auditions after achieving a minimum score. And over eight-hundred-and-fifty students auditioned for our district, and almost twelve-hundred auditioned at the Allstate level. The three students who advanced to the second round, and please come up on a call your name. We'll just stand up here. Eli Galligan, French horn. Dale Smith, percussion. And Connor Williams, tuba. In addition to this, the district honor bands came out right at the end of December, and we had another great year. We had ten students selected for these bands. Keep in mind, we're with Forsyth and Cherokee. Lambert alone had sixty-five students make the district honor bands. They're much larger student clientele to work with. But for the eleven-twelve band, we had Dale Smith, second chair percussion. There we go. Down right there. Thank you, Dale. Savannah Malden, clarinet. Eli Galligan, horn. Luis Gonzalez, trombone. Connor Williams, tuba. This is not in the order that I printed them. All right. Natalie Giddens, flute. Rihanna McLendon, flute. Bailey Gaddis, clarinet. I believe J.R. Nagel is at tennis. Am I right? Yes. Jared Davis had some car issues, so we'll recognize them tomorrow in class. They actually just had their district honor band this weekend, this past weekend, at Fannin, and it was wonderful. Went three clinicians from out of town. It was a really nice performance. And finally, we had three students selected for the Allstate band. As I said, over twelve-hundred students auditioned for this, including three of ours. They'll spend the first weekend of March in Athens, Georgia for this event at the Classic Center. The students selected were Eli Galligan, fifth chair, horn. Dale Smith, second chair, excuse me, first chair percussion, wasn't it? Yes, first chair percussion. And Connor Williams, third chair, tuba. And that is our recognition tonight. We're very proud of these young ladies and gentlemen. They're almost all serve as leadership positions within our band, and our band functions so much easier because of their hard work. It encourages our younger students to try for things they didn't think they could do either. So once again, we're going to do a picture real quick. Thank you again.
Wait, do you want to shake?
Oh, one more?
I just want to shake your hands.
Oh, okay. Go. Absolutely. You want to stay where you are? We'll come filter to you.
Either way, it's different order, so it's kind of funny. I don't know what it is. I want to tell them congratulations.
I thought it was yours.
Congratulations.
Go that way.
So proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Thanks for coming to see us. Congratulations, guys. Yeah, it's good to see you. Thank you, Mr. Y.
Congratulations to you as well, Ms. Rude. Thank you. Great job to all the students. Next up, I believe, PHS principal, Mr. Chris Wallace, has a presentation for the Skills USA national champion.
Thank you, Chairman. Board members, Dr. Wilson, Mr. Young. Appreciate you guys having us out tonight. This is a really awesome occasion. I get to come present in front of you guys this evening. We have a young lady, tenth grader at our school, who was actually a ninth grader when this competition takes place over the summer. And I'm going to bring her up here in just a second. But she's actually a national champion, and we've recognized her. She's actually a two-time national champion. They will be recognizing her again in another area. But in Skills USA is the program, or the CTSO, as we call it, Career Technical Student Organization, that she competed in, in the area of job interview, which is, as you probably all know, and all of you know, is a skill that you really have to work hard at to develop. And it's amazing that someone her age can do as well as she has and compete among so many of her peers all the way across the country to win at the national level. So she competed over the summer and won at the national level. We did already recognize her. But we want to give her a special presentation tonight. We ordered her a ring signifying this with a national championship insignia on it. Has the job interview on there, the dragon on there. Anyway, you probably all won't be able to see it, but we want to present that to her tonight. Of course, I had to have it custom-made. Folks at Jobston's helped us out with this, and we're really appreciative of that. But we're very proud of how Emma represents our school and our district. And for those of you not as familiar with Skills USA, I was just going to read you their mission statement so you kind of know exactly what they stand for. It says, "Skills USA empowers its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. Skills USA improves the quality of our nation's future skilled workforce through the development of framework skills that include personal, workplace, and technical skills grounded in academics." So I think that gives a pretty good overall picture of what Skills USA stands for. And so we have students compete. They compete at the regional level, state level, and then if you're good enough, you compete at the national level. And I believe that was in Louisville, Kentucky, where they went to compete, and she came out number one. So that's pretty awesome. It's not that often we get a national winner at that level. And she was in ninth grade, I think I mentioned that, when this happened, just had finished her ninth grade year. So Emma, come on up here. Let everybody see who you are.
You got to stick up here. That. Stand up there and do a picture. Yeah, I'm sure he can pressure on. You want to show the ring? Show the ring.
You got jewelry on Valentine's Day.
I did want to tell you all, you are more than welcome to stay if you want to. But if you would like to leave, don't feel obligated to stay. So if you want to take a second to leave, congratulations, everybody. Okay, we're going to carry on. Item six of the agenda superintendent reports. Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first one is our financial update. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. We'll let everyone finish running away. I love that they get dismissed right before the financial report. We'll review a couple of our funds here. The first one is the general fund summary. FY nineteen, general fund revenue collected through January of nineteen was sixty-five point six-nine percent of our budgeted revenue. Our expenditures are at forty-seven point nine-five percent of the budgeted expenditures. Everything is running on schedule. We've collected a little over ninety percent of the profit taxes that we had budgeted for these years. So actually, at this point in time, that's very good for us. We're pleased to see it. We typically do not collect them all because of the two-and-a-half percent collection fee. We have to budget it. We don't get it, and we know we'll typically be a little bit short there. But we're in a good position right now. I'm really pleased with the receipts that we've had so far. If you want to go ahead to the SPOLOST.
You keep closing the list.
Oh, I know.
Close the one tab, not close all the... Close the one tab. Nope.
This is not one of them. No, the next one did. Our SPOLOST and capital projects summary. Our SPOLOST revenue for January of nineteen was four-hundred-eighty thousand, eight-hundred-forty dollars and thirty-four cents. We earned interest of three-hundred, four-hundred-fifty-four dollars and four cents. Issued expenditures of fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-sixty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And came up at the month-end of January with a balance of eight million, five-hundred-sixty thousand, eight dollars and four cents. This is our running report. You can see where our twelve-month average, we are now up to four-hundred-nineteen thousand plus, so we're very pleased with that. We still do use four-hundred to four-hundred-twenty thousand as our revenue estimate so that we do not overspend our SPOLOST account. As you all know, we have quite a few projects coming up. And I'm just going to start including in this report because we're supposed to review each of the different types of accounts that we have, and one of them is debt service. We're required to have it. We have no debt. So very pleased to report that, and we'll keep you all updated on that. I'd really like to keep that at no debt. Do you all have any questions on this portion?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next one, we are updating report on attendance. You all?
Dr. Wilson, I'll do the staff attendance first. Last month, our winner was Pickens Junior High, ninety-six point eight-three. This month, our staff attendance goes to Hill City. Ninety-six point twelve. The top comes down. Come on down. Let me give you... Your certificate. That is awesome. Ninety-six... Ninety-six point twelve percent.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next report we'll do is our student report. Last month's winner of the banner was Pickens Junior High School. This month, the banner's going to stay at Pickens Junior High School. So Dr. Black, you'll come down, give you a certificate. You can keep your banner. Awesome. Ninety-five point three-two percent. Pickens Junior High. You have an awesome job. Even though our numbers are down just a little bit, our ADA across all of our schools is still at ninety-three point five percent or better. There is a little bit of sickness out there, even Stacy was talking about how it might impact at some point transportation, but we're still in pretty good shape. But you can see our numbers dropping just a little bit because of some of the sickness that's out there. Next report I'll do is our detailed drop history by month. You will remember that last month, I told you that we had two students that had re-enrolled, and as soon as they physically show up, we would be able to remove them from our drop list, and they have shown up. And so our drop total is ten for the year, and that reflects those two being added back in. We picked up a student that dropped from October and a student that dropped from December. So our grand total is ten right now, which is really good. That is awesome. Next reports I'll give, I'll just flow on into the operations and construction and maintenance. Do the maintenance first. Big shout-out to the Sheriff's Office for helping with the teardown of the two mobile units. And behind PHS, any of you that have been back there have seen that the two mobile units have been taken care of. One of those mobile units is going to be moved to Pickens Junior High School temporarily to be used for storage in the locker room. And I say temporarily because it's only going to be there until Phase Two of our construction out there, gets started, and then it will be removed as well. So we really appreciate Sheriff's Office supplying us some labor to get that taken care of. Transportation reports, everything is going well. Another new driver training, February twenty-fifth through March first. Hopefully, we'll get some more drivers out of that that will complete and stay with us. You guys know the challenges that we face and Stacy constantly faces in transportation. It's a never-ending struggle to keep enough drivers. SRO report for the month. We had eight truancy citations issued. We had two juvenile complaints. Food service, lot going on in food service. This is National School Breakfast Week, March fourth through eighth, two thousand and nineteen. The theme is going to be Start Your Engines. Beth is excited about that. One of the goals is to get participation in breakfast up as high as we can, and that kind of segues into our School Breakfast Challenge for two thousand and nineteen. School Nutrition Services will select two to five schools to participate in the Atlanta Community Food Bank School Breakfast Challenge, and we're excited about that. Schools are required to implement a new marketing strategy to increase breakfast participation, which kind of overlaps nicely with one of our goals for the year already. The nice thing about this is that the school in the district with the highest increase in breakfast participation from the district will receive a thousand dollars. That's a nice incentive. And furthermore, the school district with the highest increase in average daily participation will win a chance to have Freddie Falcon come visit. So that would be interesting. So we got a lot of neat stuff going on with food service as well. Beth always does an awesome job. Can't say enough good things about her either. And Dr. Wilson, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Bring us down to section seven, action items. First action item is approval of superintendent's contract. Most of you probably know Dr. Wilson's basically on a thirty-day kind of contract now. And it was important for this board to guarantee some stability and longevity for the school system. We believe that's a, I guess, I don't know, investment, but almost an investment worthwhile. And so we've worked very hard to get this new contract, which I think is beneficial for everyone involved. And barring no unforeseen circumstances, it will keep Dr. Wilson here until June, at least June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So what would be the board's pleasure? To approve... Yeah, motion. Can I have a motion?
This item on the agenda.
A motion from Mrs. White.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Finley. And any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Congratulations. Item B, approval of personnel. Personnel action report. Everybody's had time to review that. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve personnel to submit by the superintendent.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Item C, budget amendments. Ms. Smith, could you give a summary of what your request is?
Yes. In this budget amendment, you know, occasionally, we have to come in and do a budget amendment. And the reason we do these is whatever budget we submitted in the beginning during the tentative and initial budget approval, we sometimes have to have a change. Well, at the time that we're doing those approvals, this specific amendment is only federal grants. There are nine grants involved, and y'all have a copy. We uploaded a copy of all the grants as they were submitted to the state and approved by the state. But when we are doing the initial budget, we quite often do not have either an approval or we may not even have an amount. We might have an estimate on some of these grants. Well, as you see, there are quite a few of these grants. Each one of them has special rules and regulations that go with it, lots of red tape. So we have different people, our federal programs director, our special ed coordinator, and our vocational director, that have to submit information to the state through the Georgia Department of Education portal. You'll hear us call it the CONAP. And there are lots of documents that have to go in besides what you're seeing here that have to happen prior to us even getting to the budget part. But each of these grants has specific requirements, what you can and can't spend money on. So we submit our request. They review it. They typically... And you'll see the one that's twenty-five pages, they kick back to us a few times. And we go back and forth on, we want something worded this way. No, we don't like this. Okay, let's change this. Yes, you can do this. But some things, this happens to be Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title V. There's our flow-through. We call it Six B. It's our special education grant. There's a special ed federal pre-K grant, and there are three CTA vocational grants. So each grant has its own set of rules. As you see, it gets quite detailed. Some require more than others do. There's no explanation for why each department is different, but they are with these grants. Title I is by far the most extensive, so that's your twenty-five-page explanation in here. But when we're doing the initial budget, we don't always have all this nailed down. Sometimes, we don't even have the total amount for sure. So as we go through the year, there is a point when we need to change what we have estimated as our revenue and our expenditures to what actually got approved. Then there's also a process. If you had any money left from last year, some grants let you carry it over. So you have to, once you get the first set approved, you then have to do another amendment to budget your carryover. And they still go through the same process. You jump through the same hoops, and you must get the same approval from the state. Prior to us, we don't even need to bring it to y'all to have approved until they approve it because if they don't approve it, we can't spend it. So we are at a point where these nine grants have settled, and they've all got some kind of approval. We have all these projects going for the most part, and they're being paid for. Some of these are salaries. This includes the trauma counselor. It includes the new instructional strategist. There are different pieces, our academic coaches at each of the schools. There are lots of things, as you see, that can happen in these grants. So we're very thankful for these monies. It is millions of dollars to us. So we do jump through the hoops and deal with the red tape so that we get these monies. But what we're asking for now is, we are now asking to change the budget, and you'll see the bolded items in italics, only in the special revenue column, nothing in general fund. I made it the revenue, especially if we had carryover. So these match these grants exactly. That's why you have these backup sheets so you know they do match. But this is where our budgets are set right now. This is what we have permission to spend the money on. So we need to make it official. So the budget I've already submitted to the state, the initial budget, I can't change that in our system until y'all approve this. Then I can go change it in our system so that when we're keeping up with these budgets, it's a lot easier for me to pull a report and give it to someone and say, okay, here's where you are right now. Until we do all this, I'm manually doing these grants, and so are lots of folks out in our schools. So this makes it simpler. It also isn't a housekeeping issue to a certain extent. We used to not have to do this quite as often. We usually did this manually. It is a lot easier for us, since we have so many now, to actually change it in our system. And then we, of course, have to resubmit it to the state with our reporting that we do. It's called a DEO forty-six. Do you all have questions?
The Carl Perkins, was it reflective of any changes in that legislation that was passed last year? Or has that not been implemented yet? Do you know?
Which legislation are you referring to? There, we actually have, this is just three of our grants. We have quite a few state grants.
I think it was vocational education or CTA.
Well, we have three that we're doing today, so I don't know which one you're... There were several changes, but now what changed?
Well, I guess I was looking, was there any financial changes on our end?
When it comes to these particular grants, no. This is what our procedure has been. These three are three smaller grants, and you can see by the detail.
Well, we receive the same amount as we have here?
Give or take a few dollars. We have not received a large increase or a severe cut at all.
That's not serious.
Right. No, we're, give or take a few dollars each year, but we still have to, we need that housekeeping where we actually match dollar for dollar. Any other questions?
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented?
I make the motion to approve the budget amendment.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Approval of PHS out-of-state field trip. Do you care, Mr. Wallace, to briefly, I think everybody's had time to review it, but do you want to briefly describe what that request is? I hate to put you on the spot.
We have so many different things that we have going on, so I'm not sure which ourness is requesting for tonight, but...
It's the... Yeah, no, I put you on the spot.
That's all right. My fault.
Out-of-state, I have a summary. Out-of-state overnight American literature and AP literature field trip to Montgomery, Alabama.
Yes.
Visiting the first White House of the Confederacy, Pitts Gerald Museum, Rosa Parks Museum, and Dexter Avenue Church and Percine Museum for March twenty-first through the twenty-third.
Yes. A couple of the literature teachers came to me and asked me if this is something we could do. They haven't done it before, but they've taught some other schools that have gone on this exact trip. And I thought it would be a neat experience, see what kind of interest we got this first year going. And of course, there's some costs associated, but they have a plan and have figured out a way to help make it go for our students. So we are requesting for you guys to just allow them to go. It would be like a normal field trip, except for this one involves overnight and some travel. I think it sounds like a really neat trip for them. I told them I would like to see all that stuff, too. I don't think I'll probably be able to work it out to go. But they've got a plan with the people for ten-to-one student ratio, and they have all the details wrapped up and ready to go. And I know exactly what you're talking about now. For some reason, I thought that one was already done. But thinking through my head, different things people have asked me about coming up with some of these, we do way far in advance. But yeah, that one's coming up, and they're really, really excited. They'll be excited to hear about this one. So, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, they may put you on the spot.
No problem. Thank you.
How about how many students, give or take, are going on that?
I think they were looking at somewhere around a hundred.
I've shown approximately fifty-one to one hundred. It's kind of a broad number, but...
A hundred was like probably as many as they could possibly, that are taking that, you know, class or those classes in there. But obviously, there will be some students who, for whatever reason, will be able to make it due to, you know, whatever circumstance, like the timing, or maybe they're involved in a sport or something that won't allow them to be able to go. But they're trying to get as many who want to go, and then also, we don't want a financial hardship bringing thing to stand in the way of being able to do this. We have some ways we can help those students, too. So I don't think they have a solid number at this point.
It's a great opportunity.
A hundred would be, I think, as many as they could probably take.
I've shown four teachers.
Four teachers, but they're bringing in other people to help chaperone because we like to do that ten-to-one ratio, especially in out-of-town overnight trip.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve PHS out-of-state field trip to Montgomery, Alabama?
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip to Montgomery, Alabama.
Motion by Mrs. White, second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Item E, approval of minutes. This is for the January tenth regular board meeting. Everyone's had time to review the minutes, I believe. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Youngblood. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Item F, approval of surplus. I think this includes, I think this is almost all Pickens Junior High surplus and one special ed department. Mainly outdated technology. I think there was a slew of books, if I remember. Any questions for Stacy or anybody? Do I hear a motion to approve the surplus as presented?
I make the motion to approve the surplus as presented.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Six and eight, board comments. Six and eight, board comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to officially welcome one of our newest employees, college and career coach, Mr. Belt. Lot of high expectations from Mr. Belt.
Yes. Congratulations.
A really neat position, I think, that we're adding, really help our kids out. It's Valentine's Day, so all you guys have plenty of time now to get something for your ladies on the way home. It's only 6:30, so you can still take them out to dinner, too. It's not too late.
Any other board comments?
I hope that it happens.
Yes. Happy Valentine's, everybody. There's no other comments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you.